All right. Hello, welcome to Wise Ant's AP Subject AP Psychology Test Prep. My name is Daniel. I am a AP Psychology teacher in Florida. I've been a teacher for 13 years. I've taught AP Psychology for several years and it's my pleasure to be speaking to you this evening. So, right away, let's get started with AP Psychology Test Prep. Remember, feel free to drop your questions in the chat at any time. This is an interactive session. So please help me help you if as I'm going through my slides, you have questions, just pop them in the chat box and I will get to them once we're done with the slides. So, first thing we're going to start with is I'm going to go over the slides and the slide we're going to do is just some basic AP Psych test prep. And the idea behind it is we want to, what we want to do is we want to discuss how the test works, the way the test, the way the test works so that some test anxiety can be brought down a little bit. I know that you're all working real hard to prepare for this. The test is real soon. So, we gotta, you know, just demystify the test a little bit and kind of go from there. So, the first thing we have to do is we have to talk about the test itself. The topics covered on the test, topics we're going to cover here is the test format and tips for the multiple choice question. I'm going to go through some FRQ advice and some hacks to do better on your FRQs. And then the last one is a call that I call Unit Two or How I Learned Stuff Worrying and Love the Brain. And that unit is basically about how if you understand Unit Two, you got this. And if you don't understand Unit Two, well, I'm going to give you some basic stuff that's going to help you get where you need to go with Unit Two. So, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to talk about the test format and some tips for the multiple choice. So, the first thing you have to understand is that you have 100 questions to do and you have 70 minutes to do them. Now, I know what you're thinking, Dan, that's, you know, less time than questions. And you're exactly right. But here's what you need to remember about the AP Psych test is there are going to be a lot of questions on there that you either know cold or there are going to be questions that you don't know at all. I'm going to discuss those in a minute. This is two thirds of your test grade. So, you have to, there's no way around it. You have to be able to navigate the multiple choice. And the way I have told my students in the past is that a raw score of about 77, 78 is usually what you need to get a three. Well, your raw score on the multiple choice test is how many questions you have correct. So, in theory, if you get half the test right, 50 questions correct, you're setting yourself up on the FRQ where if you do reasonably well, you will pass the test. The more questions you get right on the multiple choice, the better you're going to do. So, the first thing you want to do is you always want to avoid the landmines. And landmine, I call them landmines. And the reason why I call them landmines is because these are the questions. You're going through the test. You come to a question, you're like, oh, my God, I don't know this. I don't know this. You know, which is the, and you're stuck on it. Avoid it. You come to a question, if you can't get to the answer relatively quick, skip it. Go to the next one. It's more important to answer the questions that you know and go back to the questions that you don't. Because if you get stuck on that question that you don't know, you're leaving all those questions you know behind. And I'm sure your teachers have already told you that. I'm sure I'm telling you something that, you know, is something you're already familiar with. But I've always been a great test taker. It's what's been my, really the thing that's helped me out with college, high school, you know, and doing professional certifications and things like that. And the biggest thing is if I don't know a question, I just move on. And then the last one is go with what you know. So, if you're going to get to those 100 questions, you gotta go with what you know on the day of the test. Just go in there, be confident in what you know, and you're going to do fine. The simplest strategies for taking the test always to me start with mindfulness. So, if you have a calm mind, you're going to have clear thoughts. When you get to the test on that, on the day of the test, calm your mind. You've studied. You've done everything you can do in order to be ready for this test. And you've prepared and you've worked all year and you're ready for it. So, calm mind, clear thoughts. Give yourself a mantra like, you know, I've, you know, I've studied, I've studied all year for this test. I'm ready. You say something enough, you'll convince yourself that you're, that you're ready, even if you don't necessarily believe it. All right. The next thing we're going to talk about is different types of questions. When I say one of these things is not like the other, you have five different responses on your multiple choice test. And of those five different responses, you're going to run into questions where five of the questions will be about like a part of the neuron and the sixth one will, or the four will be part of a neuron and the fifth one will be a certain part of the brain. And if you're unsure about the question, you're not really sure, you're looking at everything and you just can't recall it, go with the one of these things is not like the other answer because what's going to happen is usually that's the answer. Not always, but usually. Read the question. And if you notice that the question's asking something and it doesn't really seem to apply to those four, then it will apply to the fifth. The next one is the, what I call the "I never learned this" trap. So, usually what happens, and this happens on the more high difficulty questions, when someone says, "I never learned this," what's happening is they're going to choose that answer because the other four answers don't really seem to fit. So, that fifth one, the "I never learned this," is one that you've never seen in class. It looks completely foreign. It's like reading Greek and you're like, this makes us, you know, but you choose it because you think it's the least worst option. The reality is, is that's one of the first ones you can kick out. If you've never learned it, then kick it out. You don't need, you don't need it. The last thing I would say for the simple strategies is maximize your correct answers. Get as many in the bank as you can. And this goes back to avoiding those landmines. Read through the question and if you know it pretty quick, answer it. And the other thing I'll say with maximizing your correct answers is this. Most of the time, your first answer, your first thought is usually the correct thought. It's usually you talk yourself out of the right answer and into the wrong answer. Now, sometimes, of course, you will talk yourself in to the right answer. You'll figure it out. But you don't want to spend too much time ruminating on these questions because you only have 70 minutes. As far as prep advice, you have eight units and we're going to talk about the eight units, you know, in a little bit. Identify the units based on three criteria. And the criteria is you got it, you kind of got it, or you don't got it at all. And I realize that's a double negative improper grammar, but bear with me. So, "got it" means that you, every test you've taken on this, every, you know, every assessment you've done, you've done well on it. And when I say well, I mean like, you know, a B or better. Kind of "got it" is you're maybe doing well half the time on the assessments, you know, but and you feel like you understand it, but you're not all the way there. And then not at all is kind of self-explanatory. Like you're looking at unit and I'm just pulling this one out of the sky, Unit Three, and you're like, this makes absolutely no sense. That's your not at all unit. Divide your time accordingly when you prep. You wanted to devote about 60% of your time to your not at all because you gotta brush up on those. Devote another 40% to your kind of "got it's" and the last, that 10% to your "got it" because you always want to shore up what you know. So, we're going to talk about Unit Two in a little bit with the Unit Two. Let's say Unit Two is the one that you got. You definitely want to make sure that you spend time on it because all you're going to do is is add more confidence to what you already know. I would also recommend prep books, for example, like Five Steps to a Five. There are plenty of websites like Fiveable. I believe that's what it's called. There are so many AP websites out there. It's really, you have your choice. Look at old AP tests on the College Board site. One of the things I'm doing with one of my Wise Ant students is we're just going through AP FRQs. We're answering the questions. I'm using the criteria to grade it and it's been helping him out tremendously. So, our goal is always, we want to go through the old tests because they're going to ask questions, maybe not the same question, but the questions will be very similar. And if you, the more familiarity you have with the test, the better you're going to do. So, that's the multiple choice. Let's talk next about the FRQs. And what we're going to talk about with the FRQ, oh, let me go back. What we're going to talk about with the FRQs, the key is you have to keep it simple. And so many students I've found, they write paragraphs, they write so much on the FRQ that you'll answer the question right, but because you keep writing, you end up losing the point because you add too much. So, this is one third of your test grade. And this is, and basically think of it this way, this part is worth 50 points. The other is worth, the multiple choice is worth 100 points. So, maybe it's a little bit more than a third. I mean, but anyway, this is, this is what we're going to, essentially, this is the part where you, where if you have a passing grade, you're going to really bolster it. If you are close on your multiple choice, this is what's going to put you over the top. But you cannot expect your FRQ to save you if you have a bad multiple choice. You need to make sure you have a good multiple choice so that you have a good FRQ. And if you understand the FRQ part, you're probably going to do well on the multiple choice. The second thing is don't overthink these. The FRQ is designed to make you doubt yourself. Don't doubt yourself. You know this. So, the key with it is read the question and take the question on face value. Don't try to, you know, see any subtext or anything like that because that's not there. The, all that is there is the question itself, the scenario, and the terms that you have to answer. I'm going to go over the define and apply formula momentarily. That formula is the key to answering these questions correctly. And the last thing I'm going to tell you is basically use bullet points, write in bullet points. Don't, don't give the grader a giant text box because what's going to happen is it makes it hard for the grader to read it. And the harder it is for them to make sense of it, it's not going to work in your favor. You want to make it as easy as possible for them to grade it because more often than not, that helps you out. So, here's how we're going to, so here's how we respond. Bullet points, like I said, they're okay and they're appreciated by the graders. You want to avoid the paragraph. You're going to define the term, apply it to the question. Remember, two FRQs in 50 minutes equals plenty of time. You're going to have 14, you're going to essentially have 14 different terms that you have to, that you have to respond to. Okay, 14 terms in 15 minutes, you got this. Because even if you take two minutes per term, you're at 28 minutes. Three minutes, again, the math will, you'll figure itself out. Some of the stuff is really easy, but the key is define the term, apply, apply to the question. So, if you have something like the part of the brain, like the frontal lobe, you would say the frontal lobe is, you know, the frontal lobe is part of the cerebral cortex and it is where this, you know, X, Y, and Z mental processes happen. And then you apply to the question. So, since the frontal lobe is where our personalities are, you could say because Phineas Gage took the railroad spike, the railroad spike, you know, injured Phineas Gage's frontal lobe, his personality changed. That's an application of the frontal lobe. Congratulations, you got a point. Keep it simple. So, as far as define and apply goes, you're going to define the term first. Then you apply the definition of the term to the scenario. Work with the terms you know first. So, this question I've put up is from the AP Psych exam in 2016. And basically, it's about how Ashley drove from New York to California to attend college and it gives you some of the events that happened. The events are great because they give you reference points in the, in your FRQ. So, now we're going to go, we're going to, let's just do Part A real quick with motor neurons. What's the motor neuron? The motor neuron is the neuron that affects movement. It's where, it's where the signals from your brain manifest themselves in your movement. Motor neurons are what do that. And then, so you've defined what a motor neuron is. And then what you're going to do is apply that definition to the scenario. So, you would say, you know, Ashley uses her motor neurons to drive the car, for example. As she is making a turn, her motor neurons are what guides the steering wheel for her to make the turn, the turn. Simple, easy, you got your point. Don't overthink this. Don't write a ton of different stuff here. Make sure that you, even if you don't feel like you know the term, make your best guess. And whatever your best guess is, keep it short, sweet, and to the point. Define the term, apply the term. You got it. The other thing is, again, easy reading, easy scoring. I've, you know, mentioned bulleted lists. Now, the third time I've talked about bulleted lists and they're acceptable. In fact, the College Board kind of likes it. So, if you look at the example on the right, what you're going to see is that this person underlined the term and every time they were done with the term, they jumped to a new line. So, this is what I mean by bullet points. So, you could actually do a written bullet where you do the bullet and then you write out, write it out. That will be helpful too because it gives the reader something to look at. The more you help the reader read your answer, the better you're going to do. So, if you look at this person's, if you look at this person's answers on the test, they actually did quite well. I believe they, they got, if they didn't get seven out of seven, they're real close, like they got five out of seven. And again, it's just part of it is, it's so easy to read. And so, when you make it easy to read and use define and apply, you're going to be all right. So, the last thing we're going to talk about is Unit Two or How I Learned Stop Worrying and Love the Brain. If you've ever seen the movie Doctor Strangelove, that's where I get the, that's where I draw the inspiration from. So, that's an old movie. None of you have seen it. All right. So, Unit Two is the most difficult unit in AP Psychology, bar none. A lot of, a lot of people who are in AP Psych, like myself, I'm more of a humanities person than a science person. So, Unit Two was always trouble for me because there's a whole lot of biopsychology going on. You're talking about neurons, you're talking about neurotransmitters, cells, all of this, all the biology. And it's hard because there's so much of it going on. But the great thing about Unit Two is that if you know this unit, you know the test. There are a significant number of multiple choice questions and several of the FRQ questions are drawn from this unit. The great thing is, is that you can always kind of go into Unit Two and you can apply to all the other stuff. So, one of the things that's really helpful is you use it as roadmap to the rest of the course. So, for example, we have our brain here and if you know what the frontal lobe, parietal, occipital, temporal, you're going to be all right. You have, you have basically every single part of the course is taken care of here. So, for example, your occipital lobe, that tells you a lot about the sensory and perception unit. And so, you relate everything back to that stuff and the more connections you draw between the units, the better you're going to do. So, I titled this Association Areas, but you know, again, one of the things I would recommend doing is, and if I'm able to make this, to make this PowerPoint available to you all, this link is called the Brain Map Wrap. It gets a little, it sticks with the textbook, even some of the risque parts of the textbook. But just as, just as a fair warning, but the bottom line is you listen to this, you're going to understand what the brain does. It's fantastic. My students absolutely have loved it. You know, I would, I remember they even came to the test and they're, you know, they're saying this is the Brain Map Wrap. It'll help you pass the test. And so, it's one of those great mnemonic devices. It's one of those things that's so helpful with understanding what you're learning and just doing that memorization stuff. So, like I talked about in the previous slide, relate the part of the brain to the unit number. So, for example, Unit Seven is the frontal lobe and the limbic system because it's about your personality, emotions, things like that. All right? And then the last thing you'll want to do is memorize the brain. I say, and I'm going to say memorize a lot because you commit this stuff to memory or, you know, use your hippocampus, if you will. You're going to, you know, you're going to do better on the test. So, you're associate, remember, your association areas will do all the encoding onto your hippocampus. And then on the test, you will do that whole recall part from your long-term memory, not your short-term. The last thing I would say with your neurons and neurotransmitters, don't get bogged down in the weeds of everything because these questions are designed to, they're designed to make you doubt yourself to trick you. Again, I'm going to kind of go back, go down to the last point and work my way up a little bit. So, I say use your acetylcholine to memorize the neuron diagram. And again, remember, it's the acetylcholine that is the neurotransmitter responsible for helping us memorize things. The key here is you want to make sure that you're, you want to make sure that you're looking at the diagram and you know where each part is and have a reasonable idea of what they do. Differentiate the parts of the neuron. So, for example, what I tell my students, the myelin sheath is like the rubber cord that covers the metal on an electrical cord, for example. It makes conductivity better. Know your basic neurotransmitter, you have acetylcholine, serotonin, dopamine, GABA, you know, epinephrine, norepinephrine, know those, know what they do and know the different parts, the different, you know, Unit Eight treatment, things that they will help. The last one is relationships that we're going to talk about. Unit Two flows into every other unit, even Unit One, because when you talk about cross-sections of the brain and things like that, that goes in the scientific foundations of psychology. All the other units derive from Unit Two. So, if you can associate the brain and the different part of the brain with each unit, you're going to be ahead in the game. Make connections. If you, the more connections that you make, the better you're going to be. So, and then the last one is use mnemonic devices whenever possible. So, I'll give you an example. If the occipital lobe of the brain, and one of the things that I have my students do is occipital lobe, touch your occipital lobe, the back of your head, occipital lobe, OC, ocular, your eyes, you see with your occipital lobe. So, you know, occipital, ocular, eyes, sight. There you go. Anytime you can make a mnemonic device, use it. Even if it seems like the goofiest thing ever, you're going to remember it and that's the key. In fact, sometimes the goofier it is, the better it is because it's so absurd, you can't forget it. So, that's pretty much all I have for my initial presentation. It's time for the Q and A and I look forward to your questions. All right. And let's see what questions are coming in. And again, it can, your questions can be on anything in AP Psych. If you, if it's not something related to the presentation I just did, feel free to, feel free to ask it. You know, this is an open forum and our goal is to get you ready to pass the test. All right. Okay, I just got a question that came up here. First question is what is an example of a definition and application from the FRQ? So, here's what I would answer. Let's say you have a, an FRQ and it says, you know, Jimmy is, Jimmy is someone who is having, who is having, you know, problems with forming speech. And what they have found is they, they want his, doctors want to diagnose what's going on. So, they test the following areas of the brain. Sure enough, two you're going to see, especially when we talk about speech and problems with speech, we're going to see the Wernicke's area and the Broca's area. We're going to see those. It's guaranteed. So, what I would say is the first thing you want to do is you see Wernicke's area and you define the Wernicke's area. The Wernicke's area of the brain is the part of the brain that, that translates verbal, you know, verbal speech, you know, the verbal, the information that we get from, from our, I'm tongue-tied, I'm sorry. We're going to, is what takes the, what I'm saying to you and makes it make sense in the brain. So, if you stand, so if someone stands there with, with a, with a, with a paragraph or with a few words, they read the words out and tell the person to write the words and the words are different than what the person is reading, then you might have an issue with the Wernicke's area. That would be an application for it. Now, if the person is able to reproduce the speech written, but they're not able to reproduce it verbally, then it might be, then we would, then that would be Broca's area. So, we would go next to Broca's area and the Broca's area is where speech production happens. So, with speech production, what we would have is, what we would have is situation in which we, situation, I'm sorry, Broca's area, situation in which we have speech production issues. So, if you're not able to produce something in your Broca's area, it's going to manifest itself with different ways that you speak. So, if you can't form different letters or things like that, it might be a problem with your Broca's area. So, that would be one example of how you do the define and apply. Define Broca's area, example, person is able to listen to speech, they can write it down, but they can't actually verbally speak it. So, that would be your Broca's area. All right. Let's see the questions coming in. Okay, next question I have that I've seen come in is explain the difference. Okay, is explain the difference between the parasympathetic nervous system and the sympathetic nervous system. So, remember how we talked about, how I talked about mnemonic devices? The goal with a mnemonic device is it clicks in your memory. So, sympathetic sympathy, it's active. When you feel sympathy for someone, it's a feeling. You feel the emotions and you're able to assign those emotions to, to a situation. So, you know, if someone is going through a hardship, you feel sympathy for them. Your sympathetic nervous system works similarly. It is the part of your nervous system that activates when a fight or flight response happens. So, the example I've always used is you're walking across the street, you hear brakes wheel on a car. You immediately look and you're seeing what's about to happen and you jump out of the way. That's your sympathetic nervous system. The adrenaline has kicked in, you know, and your body is doing a whole lot of automatic processes to get you out of a bad situation. So, now you're out of the situation, you're breathing heavy, but you're starting to calm down. That's your parasympathetic nervous system. That's the part that allows you to kind of get back to that calm state. One of the things to remember, especially when we talk about the biological psychology, is we are always trying to talk about how the body always wants to be at homeostasis. And so, your brain is always trying to get you right back to that nice balance point where you're, where you're feeling good and you're feeling, and you're feeling like you, you know, you're normal. You never want to be too active, you never want to be too low. So, you always want to get to homeostasis. And that's what your thalamus does in the brain. It's like your thermostat. But getting away from parasympathetic and sympathetic. Bottom line is what you want to do is you want to make sure that you're getting to, that you're able to differentiate the two. And similarly, you have your central nervous system, your peripheral nervous system, is this. All right, let me, let me, let me finish real quick on the, on the central and the peripheral. Central is your brain, your spinal cord, peripheral, everything else. So, the next question we have is how do we perceive pain? That is a really good question. So, here's the, here's the basics on, on how we perceive pain. We have our sensory neurons and they sense signals up to the brain and that is what registers that we feel pain. So, for example, if you put your hand on a hot stove, your sensory neurons are going to immediately communicate and they're going to send the signals back to the brain. Hey, this is hot. And your brain is going to send a signal back saying, get your hand off the stove, to your motor neurons. So, the term that will be used for your sensory neurons is your The, the term that will be used for your sensory neurons is your afferent nuons, neurons. An afferent, it starts with A for affect. Um, A effect is how you feel about something. And E effect is what you do about something. So your afferent neurons are the ones that perceive the pain, they're the ones that pull it off, so. That's also part of the sensory and perception unit two. There's a lot of things that go on with it, but the bottom line is, is that your neurons are sensing something uncomfortable. There's a chemical reaction and so as long as you understand on the FRQ especially. That if there's a pain scenario, it's your sensory neuron sending the signal to the brain and to let it. And, and, and the brain is making the decision often very quickly, quicker than we can perceive, to remove. Uh, to remove yourself from the painful situation. If you can't remove yourself from the painful situation, the brain works on managing the pain. So if anyone, I'll give you an example of that part. If anyone has ever been in a situation where. You've, you've had an injury, often it's the days after you, you've acquired the injury. Where you feel more pain than when you initially were injured. And that's because what the brain does is it does a really good job at, at kind of a. Kind of directing your attention elsewhere. And so there are various parts of the brain that deal with this, but you know, like your limbic system would be involved because that's the emotional parts of it. But you would also have a lot of perception areas too that would, that would deal with it. So you have various sensory areas in your brain, your parietal lobe would be one of those areas that deals with pain as well. Things that you're really worried about is you have 100 questions to answer in 70 minutes. So the problem with um, 100 questions in 70 minutes. It's often pretty, pretty tough. Cause you're thinking, I have less than a minute to answer every question. But here's the good news. On the AP exam, there are a lot of questions that are just basic recall. So what I would recommend doing, um, always, 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 you wanna memorize as many of the definitions as you can. Um, one of the things I work on with my students is that I have a, a 17-page PDF. That has pretty much every definition. For, for some people, reading a list is really good and it helps you memorize. For others, you could um, you know, having a, a graphic organizer like a diagram of the brain is exceptional too. So the more you can memorize, the better you're going to do on the uh, on the AP exam. Because you're gonna remember stuff quicker. So as you're taking the multiple choice test, what I would say with managing time is this. Answer the questions you know. If you're going through the questions, then you hit a question, this is what I call the landmine. Where you're like, is it this or is it that? And you can't make a choice quickly, move on. And when I say quickly, I, I, you know, you don't wanna spend more than 30 seconds on, 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 on your questions at first. Now ideally, you would finish up with your questions, with your multiple choice, with about. Maybe five, 10 minutes to spare, because then what you can do is go back to the questions that you don't know. Think of it this way, when we talk about SAT prep, the SAT grades, the grades on the things that you know. It doesn't, i- yeah, and, and it will cost you points on the things you don't know. So if you've had, the more questions you answer correctly, the better your score is gonna be. So what you have to do is maximize your time on answering the questions that you know, and then the questions that you don't know, you can always go back to. The other thing to remember, and this will help you with managing your time. Is if you do well on the multiple choice part, you're setting yourself up well on the FRQ. So. On the multiple choice, your, your score on the multiple choice is how many you get right. There are no points taken off if you get them wrong, it's just rating how many questions you get right. So if you get like 75 questions right on the multiple choice, you're, you're right there at a, you're, you're right on the line of a three. And you'd really have to bottle the FRQ in order to, in order to, to not get a, you know, to not get a three. So that's what I would say is, is the big, and, and the al- also the other thing that will help you manage your time is. Go in as, you know, relax with, with a good relaxed energy, that will really help you. As far as the FRQ goes, you have 50 minutes and you have two questions, but it's divided into 14 different terms. So. As I said, um, as I said earlier, you don't wanna spend too much time on terms that you don't know. Always work with the stuff that you do know and that will help you with the things that you don't know. So. If you get, so the key is just get the points that you can get. And then once you're in, in a position where you don't have. Uh, where you're just looking at stuff you don't know, then, then you're, you're good, you're, you can spend the time on it. Alright, so any more questions? And again, like I said, they can be related to anything. It doesn't necessarily need to be on the topics we covered, which is the tech, which is different test components and, and unit two. If you have questions on unit three, if you have questions on unit eight, which is the uh, um, you know, uh, psychotherapeutic psychology. Where we go over the disorders, I can go over that with you as well, we can go over um. All the different units. So whatever you guys wanna discuss. And if you wanna just direct message uh, myself, uh, with your question, you can go ahead and do that. You don't need to uh, you know, ask it to everyone, that, that would be fine. And of course, I, I keep, you know, I, I won't read your name out or anything like that. Uh, one thing I will talk about, here, here's something to talk about prior to the test. Um, your cram sessions, if you're gonna, no all-nighters before the test. Do not spend the entire night studying the test before the test, cause you're gonna go in and you're gonna be spent. Ideally, you wanna cut off the, like, the real heavy late night studying about 48 hours before the test. You wanna get your body in a nice, in a good circadian rhythm, so that when it's time for the test. You're ready. So the next question I got is can we go over unit eight and nine and important topics in the section? So unit eight, um, every, every psych that I've, I've done has unit eight as the uh, as the last unit. It's the um. It's the uh. It's the abnormal psych unit. So the biggest, and, and so if you can type in what, what unit nine would be, uh, that your teacher might have. Your teacher might have separated out one of the units, I could help you out with that. So what, what I would say with uh, with unit eight, we wanna start off with um. Uh, what makes a beha- what makes some, something abnormal behavior? An abnormal behavior is behavior that not just is um, atypical or. Or, you know, culturally not, not, not approved, but it's behavior that impedes your quality of life. So the example I use is someone who has uh, OCD. And they're, and, and they can't hold the job because they're constantly getting fired because they're spending, because they're, they're spending. You know, an hour in front of their mirror, making sure that their hair, I don't have much left, but they're making sure that their hair is just so. They can't leave the house unless their hair is just so. Um, the thing about OCD and other anxiety disorders is they're not based in logic. So it's, i- i- and, and it, it's, it's an emotion coming from an area that's not. That doesn't make sense. So when you talk about OCD and you have these compulsions to do things. Uh, for example, like you have to flip the light switch three times. Or otherwise something bad will happen. There's no relationship, but in the person's mind, there is a relationship. And that's sort of what it means. Now OCD and anxiety disorders, as for, as far as disorders go, they're. I don't wanna say mild, but they're the ones that are i- in a lot of ways correctable. And so what will happen is we talk about the different therapies. We have cognitive behavioral therapy, we have psychoanalysis, we have a variety of therapies. And you know, psychoanalysis is Freud, free association, dream analysis, that stuff. Cognitive behavioral therapy is your talk therapy. And then you can have offshoots like uh, humanist theories like Maslow and whatnot. So that would be how you treat anxiety disorder. Now let's get into something different, which is schizophrenia, which would be a psychotic disorder. And psychotic disorders uh, occur in the brain when something is not. You know, when, when, when sensory and perception is off. So someone who has schizophrenia, they are experiencing hallucinations. Now the thing with hallucinations is someone who has schizophrenia, the hallucination is just as real as reality. So they, so someone who has schizophrenia has a very difficult time distinguishing the two, between the two. Or in many cases may not be able to. So when we hear those people talking about how the voices are telling them to do something, they're very much hearing those voices. Those voices are as real to them as I, as me speaking to you right now. So they would be treated with different things such as antipsychotic medications and whatnot. They would need, um, basically they have, uh, their neurotransmitters are too active. They have a couple that are too active, which I believe is dopamine, their dopamine is too active. So that's um, how we go over that. There's a lot of different things in unit eight. That um, cause it deals with the, with the different disorders. And so what I would recommend that you do in order to prepare for unit eight. And unit nine is go through the vocabulary and if um. You know, and, and if you're unsure, um, you know, we, you know, we can, there's, there's plenty of uh, tutors, including myself, they can help you out. I'm sure your teacher can help you out. Uh, but the goal is you wanna be able to form connections between the type of abnormal behavior. Along with uh, what might cause it. Many times with uh, with the disorders, these are inherited. So for example, schizophrenia is an inherited disorder where something like PTSD is an anxiety disorder. Where there's an environmental causation. So that's gonna be discussed as well. What are the differences between disorders caused by environment? And disorders caused by um, you know, the brain. There are some theories as well that they're gonna be discussed where it talks about. Um, that we have the theory within us, that we have the disorder within us the whole time, but a stressor is what brings it out. This could be, and, and so they might ask you to defend that or give an example of that. So you would just say something along the lines of, you're able to manage it, but then there's a tragedy, the stress of that brought out the disorder. So um, that's the really quick summary of unit eight, but um. You know, again, um, there's, there's a bit to it, but it's of, of the units, it's one of the easier ones. Any other questions? So. Let's see, um, other things to help you with the test. That I um, that I can think of. I was telling you earlier about the mantra. Um, a good thing to do is come up with a mantra now. And I know this might sound a little hokey or whatever, but again, you're, you're trying to, in a sense, manipulate your mind. And feel relaxed. And so that, that's always the goal. So when you're studying. You know, come up with it, you know, okay, I know this. Every time you feel like you know something has, you know, have a little verbal trigger, say out loud, like, okay, I know this. And that, that will help. May not need to do it for every single uh, particular. Particular uh, vocabulary term, but you'll be there. The other thing I would encourage you to do is make sure that you have some way of applying these definitions. When I say applying, what I mean is. Is you wanna be able to talk about how the, how the definition of the term looks like in action. So going back to the pain perception question. What I would say is when we talk about sensory neurons or afferent neurons. Um, what we have, what we talk about is the sensory neuron is, delivers information gathered from one of the five senses. To the brain. Alright, and then what's the uh, what's the application? Is the sensory neuron is telling the brain that the stove is hot, the music is loud. Um, you know, the, the, the sun is bright orange in the morning. Um, you know, the palm, I'm in Florida, so the palm tree is, is green. Uh, the fronds are green, things like that, that, that's the way that you would, that's the way that you would do it. Any other questions? So. Before we close, I'll give you one last thing to, to do with um. With your uh. With, I'm sorry, uh, I'll give you one last thing to do that will help you out with uh, with the test. One of the things that you could um, that you can do, especially with, with the brain. Take a diagram of the brain, color code it. And then what you do is color code the different functions. So when we talk about the different units, what are the different parts of it related to? For example, when we talk about sensory and perception, your occipital lobe and sensory and perception should be the same color. Your frontal lobe with the personality should be, should be a color. You might wanna have different parts of limbic system, maybe you have things that are serving two things, shade the different colors. You want to give your brain, and you know, again, we're gonna, we're gonna use psychology to pass psychology. You wanna give your brain as many tools as possible to pass the test and be creative. Like I said earlier, the more creative you are, the better you're gonna be at remembering this stuff. Don't go so creative that you get lost in the woods though. But the bottom line is you guys are gonna do great. Um, you're here on this uh, on this panel, we're talking about the exam. And again, whatever you need to uh, pass the test, make sure that you avail yourselves of your teachers. Make sure you talk to your, your parents, they might have great tips as well. But again, I would just say always, start with unit two, keep things simple. And you're gonna be uh, and you're, you're gonna do great, so um, that's uh, pretty much it. We're, we're uh, right up on time, that's pretty much it, so. Um, give me one moment. So um, if there are no more questions, we can wrap for today. We can, we can wrap for today. If you wanna reach out to me for a tutoring session, contact me via the link Wise Ant has dropped in the fa- in the chat. If you're studying for other AP exams, please check out the 30-plus other free AP study sessions with Wise Ant. Happening over the next few weeks. Check the second link in the chat for more links, for more information about signing up. Thank you for joining me tonight. It was a pleasure to uh, to work with all of you. Good luck on your exams.